Good evening. Please silence your cell phones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form. They're available at the front entrance and give them to the city clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. This time, I will call to order the City of Grand Terrace City Council meeting for October 8th, 2019. Our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Timothy Isom of Faithway Fellowship Church of the Nazarene. And our pledge of allegiance will be led by Pastor Art. He's a pastor for the Living Word Church here in Grand Terrace, so we're doubly blessed tonight. If you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Dear my Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you that we could pause and give you our stress and anxiety and our cares to you. Dear my Father, we need you to lift up our mayor and City Council, pray that you give them divine wisdom and discernment. Be with the City staff and the City workers. Be with our firemen and our sheriffs, Lord, and protect them as they are our first responders. And the Lord Jesus has us, that you be with this community and bless with great people and grandchildren, and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Isom. Thank you Pastor Art. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Hussey.
Present.
Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Mayor Protem Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Magna Bo.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Our next item is special presentations, which advertised as none, and so Mr. Duffy has something that he would like to present, someone that he would like to present. I discussed that perhaps that it is unfinished business, but we'll go ahead and take care of it during special presentations, Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager. Mayor and Council and citizens of Grand Terrace, I have the pleasure of introducing to you Trevor Dugan. Trevor is a code enforcement officer for the City of Grand Terrace. He recently started with us, maybe about six weeks ago, and so is Trevor Dugan.
I'll start over. It's green now. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Trevor Dugan. I come from Southwest Riverside County. I was an animal control officer there for two years, and I transferred up this way to be your week in code enforcement and animal control officer. I've been here for about two months now. Having fun. Really liking the 2030 vision that you guys have in place. I look forward to contributing to that, so thank you guys for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Dugan. Welcome. I think I saw you this weekend.
You did. Thank you.
Our next item is reordering of or additions to, a removal of items from the agenda, and I have a request from Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager, to be pulling Agenda Item Number C5 from the consent calendar. So as we move into consent calendar, I'll remind those that the consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial, and they'll be acted upon by the City Council at one time without any discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar. So Item C5 is already being removed. Are there any other requests for removal? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion of the consent calendar.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to receive the, what is it we do here to?
Approving the consent calendar.
Approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
All right, thank you. So Item C5 is the monthly financial report for June 2019. Assistant City Manager Fortune?
Mayor Protem, Cynthia Fortune. The staff report before you is the year-end monthly financial report as of June 30th, This staff report supports goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of revenue receipts and expenditure disbursements against approved So to provide City Council with a recap, our first column is our budget, and one's highlighted is the actual revenues. If I can draw Council's attention to the bottom, against a 5.6 budgeted revenue, we actually received revenues close to 5.8 million, almost 200,000 more than what we were expecting. And I was just going to review some of the highlights. So for the residual receipts, we actually had an increase of about 71,000, as shown right there. And this was mainly due to the fact that we were able to sell successor agency property, and this was our portion. This was the bulk of that. And the decrease of 60,000 from Corporation of Better Housing, this was something that we did provide Council that we were not expecting to receive any. Another increase we've had was in licenses, fees, and permits of a little over 60,000, as shown. And this was as a result for increased development activity around the city. And another big increase was our sales tax. We had projected 770, and we actually received 61,000. So when we closed our books, we did review that 40,000 of that was actually a 1718 allocation, a true-up that we received in 1819. So the actual increase was approximately about 20,000, which is 2.5 percent, which is still good. But the total 61,000 will be recorded in 1819. So now, when we take a look at our expenditures, we did have a budget of 5.6, and we actually spent 5.7, so we were over roughly about $68,000. And that is mainly, again, on our salaries. We did have to do several payouts as a result of our employees leaving, and if City Council was aware, we actually had about seven or eight positions that we actually, that had left in the course of the fiscal year that we filled. And we had an increase in legal services. I'm sorry. So for professional contractual services, we had two big increases. The increase of about 45,000 or 46,000. So we had roughly increase in legal services for developer activity, some of which we are going to get reimbursed for, roughly about 13,000 or 14,000. And we had increase in overtime expenditures for the Sheriff's Department for the year of roughly about 20,000. So what I'd like to bring to the City Council's attention is actually a revenue and expense summary. So if we look at our actual revenues of 5.8 million, less our expenditures of 5.7, we are 116,000 to the good. As your very conservative finance person, I'd just like to say we have not fully closed the books yet. We might have some outstanding invoices that we have not received that we may have to But since it's already October, we're thinking that is minimal. However, once we've actually fully closed, we will be coming back to City for our financials. So one note I'd like to make is the City Manager did receive the Sheriff's Department's proposed revised Schedule A for fiscal year 1920. If City Council will recall, we only increased the budget by 2.2 percent. That was what they originally proposed. So we had an extra about 37,000 that we said that we were going to keep in the budget for any increases. The actual increase is 87. So we're going to need another 50,000 to cover the contract this fiscal year. Just wanted to let Council know, but since we do have that extra 116, it's something we will come back to ask for additional appropriation on. And if the City Manager would like to add anything to that, sir?
I think you've covered it.
I'm sorry.
You've covered it.
Thank you, sir. So that concludes the monthly financial report. I'd be happy to answer any questions City Council may have.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager. Any questions from staff at this, or of staff at this time? Councilmember Allen.
Thank you for that report, Ms. Fortune. Do we ever anticipate the Corporation for Better Housing ever receiving anything on that?
To her on the conservative side, I would like to say no. We've only received that 60,000 once, and I've been here six years. And I don't know if that was a fluke or they had a good year that or a lot of capital assets they have are failing, that they're now replacing. Because the residual is anything extra less, you know?
Right.
Less the operations of that senior villas.
I understand.
But we can ask, I can go back and maybe ask for a projection from them, see if they can provide us with something.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Come back to Council for consideration of a motion, and this is a receive and file. Councilmember Allen.
Mayor, I move that we receive and file Item 5 of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
All right, thank you. Move to public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on any items not appearing on our regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California laws, City Council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. A brief response from staff to questions raised may be asked for as well, and items may be agendized on a future agenda. We have requests to speak at this time. Thank you. First speaker will be Marva X.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Councilpeople. On the, I just wanted to advise you that on the 20th of this year, 20th of September this year, my organization, which is Honor Flight of the Inland Empire, sent 33 veterans to Washington, DC to visit their memorials. Along with them went 18 guardians. One of those veterans was John Hayes, and he took his grandson, who is Bill Hussey. Bill had to go through a guardian training before he was admitted to the program so that he could know where the trips and falls were. I know you don't know that I'm going to do this, right? And that where all the trips and falls are in Washington and make sure that all these veterans are safe. We had veterans that were from World War II, Korea, Vietnam, Lebanon Peace and Freedom, Iraqi Freedom, and two from Cold War. There were two females on the trip, and they ranged, they all ranged in age from 88 to 97. And they had a fabulous time, and they're still talking about it. But I wanted to come tonight to give Bill his certificate because he went through the training. It's a three-hour training that these guardians have to go through, and it's not only about paying the fee to go, but it's also about going on that training to make sure that all our veterans are safe. He did a fabulous job, and there's still a lot of veterans that are talking about him and his grandfather on that trip. So congratulations, Bill, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
One of our other supporters for our organization happened to be Ms. Super Senior of California 2019, and she's a super senior because she's 80. But she wrote an article in the Redlands newspaper, and that's what's in the paper that I just gave Bill so he could see how we're being recognized in the Inland Empire and how people are starting to know more about what we're doing, and inundate me with phone calls and applications. So I still think the veterans.
You just have a little bit of time left.
Okay. Still, the veterans are putting my phone number on bathroom walls with American Allegiance between Palm Springs and LA, but I'm still getting phone calls from World War II vets as well. So we'll be sending them, we're just, I'm going to keep doing this because I'm a Navy brat. So I'm going to keep doing this until we get all the vets in the Inland Empire on this trip. First responders can go too. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for being here and sharing this with us tonight. Our next speaker is Johan Gallo.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council and staff. Johan Gallo, De Soto Street, Grand Terrace. I want to address the issue of the grant and the conversation that was held at one of the previous Council meetings, and the manner in which Councilmember Robles literally went after Councilmember Hussey. I was appalled by her conduct, and I thought it was completely unfair, given all the work that Councilmember Hussey has done to work on everything to improve the safety of our community. Councilmember Hussey has worked hard with sheriff staff, with our group, after the meeting in Azure Hills, to work on properly getting coverage for our city. It was at the meeting where Assemblymember Reyes spoke to the group and offered to help Grand Terrace in any way that she could in Sacramento. She would do whatever she could to find funding and resources and could draft a grant proposal to do that. Based on the conversation, Councilmember Hussey worked with Daniel, a member of her staff, and the Councilmember Hussey then arranged a meeting with City Manager Duffy, Lieutenant Wolf, and I to meet with Assemblymember Reyes so that we could figure out a way to put together a grant. Lieutenant Wolf even prepared a special budget for approximately 132,000 that would give Grand Terrace additional coverage. Unfortunately, Assemblymember Reyes informed us that she could not do anything as far as payroll or staffing, but she could provide other funding and resources for hardware, cameras, neighborhood watch program, and other items to reinforce the city's neighborhood watch program. After the meeting, myself and the group prepared a complete list of the items and drafted a proposal that we worked with City Manager Duffy, Lieutenant Wolf, and others to determine where the cameras would need to be located, what additional cameras we needed, and then what we would need to do to revitalize the neighborhood watch program. We have done everything that we can, and we find that we need the city's support. We already have 40 residents who have signed and are waiting to help do whatever we need to do to revitalize the neighborhood watch program. So with that, I would hope the city would support whatever we need to do to get the grant moving forward, because we have people waiting to help and want to work with the city. And we realize social media seems to be blowing up everything that's happening up here, but you know what? We're better informed than we've ever been.
All right. Thank you for your time, Mr. Gallo.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, staff, and guests. My name is Valerie Holmes, and I am the Chairman of the Veterans Wall of Freedom Committee, and I am here to invite you to join us for the Veterans Day celebration, which happens to actually fall on Monday, November 11th, at 11:00 AM at the Veterans Park. I would also like to ask Madam Mayor if she would like to say a few words, so please let me know, because we would love to hear you speak to our veterans. And we are very honored to have Marine Corps Veteran Sergeant Bill Hussey as our keynote speaker, and can't wait to hear what he's got to say, and hopefully a little bit about the trip that he took. We would like everyone to attend. We will have Dance Dimensions, dance group dancing for our veterans, and we have some other surprise things planned for that day, and we would love to have all of you come and honor our veterans that day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Holmes. Next speaker is Jeff McConnell. And it does say Jeff, it doesn't say Jeffrey.
I was in a hurry. Sorry, I came in late. I only caught, Jeffrey McConnell, 217-58 Walnut Avenue, for the record. I didn't catch much of the financial report, but it was short anyway. I just wondered, piggybacking off what I said at the last meeting, asking about, talking about our reserves being only two months, I'm just wondering, I'd like to ask staff if they had any knowledge or plans of adding anything to the reserves. Reason why I'm concerned since the last meeting, it's public knowledge now that the Fed has been, Federal Reserve has been printing $75 billion a day for the last week, and they plan on doing it for another three weeks at least as of this point for the banks, and basically that's nothing more than inflation. That's very, very, very unusual for them to be doing that. It's like trying to hold on to stave off another recession, a financial crisis. And what it does essentially, it just makes, when it does come, it makes it worse. So like I said before, I follow a lot of geopolitical international news. And also recently in the news, state of Illinois, because it can't meet its pension, difficult time meeting its pension obligations, it is cutting back on services. Yeah, it was announced, I think it was two days ago. And I just keep hearing bad news, bad news, bad news. It's the news that most people don't follow, you don't find on a regular cable. You've got to really search for it, and I don't listen to people who are trying to sell silver or gold. And I cross-reference it, and I hear it multiple times before I stand up here and talk about it. So it really concerns me, and especially what our crazy governor is doing. If you haven't heard also, he looks like he's our tax, gas tax money that we definitively want to go towards transportation, he's basically taken away and put it into rails, railways. And one other thing, oh yes, he announced that he's going to take of Calpers and Causters money, investment money, and start investing in risky carbon trading, green energy programs. And if you remember what happened during the Obama years, all those green energy programs that he spent our tax dollars on, invested, I mean, they call it investing, a lot of them went belly up to the tune of $500 billion in some cases. So put these together, and we basically have a perfect storm coming, so it behooves our leaders to follow up on this, research it, and do something about it.
Thank you for your time, Mr. McConnell. Our next speaker is Bobby Forbes.
Good evening. Thank you, Bobby Forbes, Burns Avenue, Grand Terrace. So I have a few subjects. I'll be brief as I can. Approximately three years ago, I started a petition and tried to get signatures so we could get a second sheriff. I am so grateful that Lieutenant Wolf, Bill Hussey, Council, Johan Gallo, and some other people in town are still trying to do that. But it's been three years. That's a long time. You're close, but we're not there yet. We need another sheriff on patrol. I'm not the only one that thinks it, and I thank you all for your service. I signed up for the Neighborhood Watch. Whenever that gets started, I will stand and give my time to that and make time for that, because we need it. Locally, two of the thieves that were arrested in Grand Terrace live in Grand Terrace. So the old saying is that they're coming from out of town isn't necessarily true. There are residents, children, grandchildren, stepchildren, whatever, they live here in town, and they're stealing from us. So watch your neighbors. Everybody's got cameras now. I don't have cameras, but if you come on my property, you deserve what you get. And so I don't want anybody at my house. I gated my driveway. I watch my house. I will protect anything that I have, and I think that a lot of people in town will. And I think we're going to see more gates. Get Loaded is doing a really good business down here in Michigan, so I think that there's probably a lot more people with self-defense mechanisms in their home than there used to be in Grand Terrace. And I look forward to Neighborhood Watch coming. Two weeks ago at the last Council meeting, I asked about the business licenses. No one contacted me. I would like to be contacted, or I would like to see a presentation at the Council meeting showing what happened. Did the people that have been running that program for the City of Grand Terrace get replaced? Because they were not doing a good job. I don't know if it's code enforcement's job or the company that you hired to do it. There were a lot of people in Grand Terrace doing big business in Grand Terrace that did not have current business licenses, and that's embarrassing. And thank you, Mr. French, for getting Barton Road painted quickly after the last meeting. I now ask for a stop sign where they're going to turn to go on to the 215 north, because everybody's running it because the light's up here and they're just getting on the freeway. So those people that are trying to turn north, coming from my side of the tracks, are having difficulty. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, Ms. Forbes. And that's our last request to speak during this time, so we'll close public comment and bring it back to Council for their communications. We'll begin with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. On September 29th, I had a chance to, the opportunity to attend the Rec Center Award Show up the street here at the Azure Hills Fellowship Hall. And for those of you who are familiar with the Rec Center or not familiar with it, it's an after-school evening program for youth in our town. It's privately run, but several of the youth in our town entered some of the artwork that they made in this after-school program in the LA County Fair's art show, and they won, some of them first place in their categories. And so we were all impressed enough that they put on an art show up there, and I attended, and it's really, it was very beautiful art that I saw there, all different kinds of things that you can imagine. I'm glad I attended, and I applaud those that were awarded. And then on October 4th, I also had the opportunity to attend the grand opening of the Loma Linda Veterans Village in Loma Linda. Eighty-seven individual units, combination one, two, and three-bedroom apartments, beautiful facility, gorgeous from the outside, great amenities, pool, spa, gym, that sort of thing. This is a great opportunity for veterans and their families who are working their way back up the ladder, and that this is available for them in such a great location also, so close to the VA Hospital, so close to all the facilities, and also transportation. So I was real pleased to attend that along with the Assembly members and district supervisors and other mayors and council members that attended, along with all the veterans and their families that were there. So if you get a chance, go drive down Van Loyden, and you'll see what I'm talking about. I'd like to have a facility like that in our town. I'd like to have a facility like that in our town. That was a nice one. But that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Bill Hussey.
Thank you, Mayor. I also got to attend the Rec Center's art, I mean, beautiful art that the kids did, and we also had a show given to us. The singing was beautiful that the kids did, and cheerleading and stuff, and I was really impressed. And, you know, thank all the volunteers for putting it together and working with our youth. I mean, it's a really good program. And also, we got to be there for the ribbon-cutting ceremony for Woody's. It's been a year already. I can't believe it. But, you know, the food's great, and all our businesses are great. But, you know, Mr. Miller, he opens up his business for all programs, and we have our men's Bible study there on Tuesday also. But he, you know, is very accommodating to everybody, and he takes care of our youth and feeds the football team. And we have quite a few other businesses do the same thing. But it was neat seeing people come out and help celebrate bringing Woody's in for a year. And thank you, Marva, for my certificate. That was a surprise, but, you know, it was, the honor was all mine. I mean, I had such a great time with those veterans. I mean, just the experience to deal with that, and just the stories, and, you know, the new fellowship and the brotherhood and the sisterhood I had, you know, a good group of guys, you know? I'd love to do it again. And I know we have some veterans at our senior center over here, so I wonder if we could get together with the city and say, maybe we could, because we have a community benefit fund, to get some of those guys out there to see that. That'd be great for them to see it, and just the camaraderie that they enjoy, you know, that was. And seeing, you know, a lot of volunteers come out there to welcome home, and that was just a blessing, a blessing. And then, yes, I want to appreciate and thank you for letting me, going to be speaking during Veterans' Day. You know, I'm just one vet of many here in Grand Terrace, and it's going to be an honor to speak, and, but hopefully everybody could come out for that, and it's going to be quite an honor. So, thank you, everybody, and God bless.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Sylvia Robles, welcome back.
Thursday, September 19th, I attended the Inland Empire's National Association of Industrial Something or Others, and Commercial Real Estate Summit. The thing that was very interesting, because we're going to be hearing a lot about the voting for the split rule on commercial properties versus residential post Prop 13. And it was an excellent discussion, because they're saying the way these triple-net leases work is that the cost of any property tax increase will be borne by the leasie. And that was the strongest explanation I had before on it. I couldn't understand why it was going to raise everybody's cost. And it was interesting, they asked Supervisor Kurt Hagman what he felt about it, and he mentioned, of course, there's like an $11 billion surplus at the state. But he also said, you know, that the real estate industry didn't do a good job of policing itself when it exploited some loopholes in the property tax transfer. But of course, you know, it's something that people are going to have to vote, how they feel about it. I personally also agree that we have a strong surplus, that we're not handling our finances at the state level the best way. But the main takeaway, though, that I would like to share is that the way the lease relationship works is that any property tax increase on commercial properties is going to be borne by the small business person, and so that's something that should be strongly considered. And I just want to remind folks that there was a move to put on the ballot a measure to help fund sheriff services. Without my vote, that would have never passed. I also voted a ballot argument for it. We had a hard time getting some of the people that were proponents of it signing on to the ballot measure. And then, for reasons I, you know, because there was going to be a fire parcel tax, it was taken off the ballot. So I have said in previous meetings that because it was so difficult to get a vote for a tax measure, and there's not any support also for survey, that the best route may be to be considering going out and getting signatures and making it a property owner rather than city council moved agenda. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Pro Tem Doug Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one item. Mr. French, I have a question. Regarding the traffic control that's over the freeway improvement, I believe that a quite a bit of the traffic control is actually the purview of Caltrans, correct?
Yeah, in relation to the interchange project.
Yes, in other words, anything that has to do with their right-of-way, the traffic control is theirs. That's their responsibility.
Yes, sir.
Because we've run into some problems, I think, with the manner in which the Caltrans has been administering the traffic control. And it's not unusual for a large project like this, where they may go on with an initial traffic control plan, but as the contractor gets in, he convinces someone, maybe a consultant or somebody that's overseeing the project, that you can make some minor adjustments to, you know, what the original traffic control plan is. And what I'm concerned about is, since all this circulation, you know, predominantly goes through our town, and people don't understand that there are different jurisdictions that deal with that situation, when they come racing up there at night, and there aren't, there isn't proper lighting, there aren't proper signs, all the rest of that stuff, how do we coordinate with Caltrans in relation? I mean, oh, it's a big elephant, and I'm aware of that. But how do we coordinate with them to make sure that their side of the game plan is being administered correctly? Is there a complaint phone that they don't answer, or what is it?
They do have contact information for, this would be finished product, actually, not during construction, but if there's traffic control issues that they have, we, and they have contact information that's either online or via phone, that we can contact them, and they'll start a work order to look into the issue and get it resolved.
It seems to me that it would be appropriate for us to put them on notice, written notice, and I'm just bringing this up for the city managers, in a vacation as well, put them on constructive notice that if, you know, that at this point, their traffic control is not adequate. I mean, it's far from adequate, and it has been that way for a while. And if we run into some kind of problem, they're going to inherit a liability, and they hate that. You know, jurisdictions hate liability, right? But I think it's time that they adjust a few things, even though I know they're getting closer to being complete. The estimate is April 2020, they might, you know, finally be done. There's a lot of things that are going to be happening with textures of pavement and so on, that are going to lead people to believe that they're supposed to be in a certain place. And right now, it's not cutting it. You get a lot of people trying to make a left-hand turn to get onto the southbound 215, and they all of a sudden realize, oop, that's not there anymore. And so then they're trying to crowd into the, I was one of them, and just start to crowd into the wrong lane. And at night, it makes it worse. So I think it would be important for us to, you know, even mark up a little map or something that says, guys, from here to here, this is yours; from here to there is ours, and we're putting you on notice that there's a problem, and you need to correct it. And if there's any accident, you know, equated with any of these kinds of things, or congestion or whatever, then it's on you guys. That's the only way you get any action.
Okay.
All right.
I can do that.
All right. So staff will follow up with Mayor Pro Tem on this one?
Yes.
And then follow up with the proper authorities?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I just have two items. It was a nice, light week, but I enjoyed the Rec Center celebration of the arts on the 29th, and it was really nice to be there to see all the wonderful artwork and to have an opportunity on behalf of the city with councilmembers Allen and Hussey to present our recognition as well from the city council. And then it was on the 5th of October, very nice to wish Woody's a happy anniversary. It's nice, it's hard to believe it's been a year, but good turnout for that. And that's all I have for today, so we'll move on to our public hearings. We have one public hearing tonight. It's item eight on our agenda. So to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a request to speak form and give it to the city clerk. Each person will be allowed three minutes to address the city council. If you challenge in court any action taken concerning a public hearing item, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing that was described in this notice, or in any written correspondence delivered to the city, or prior to the public hearing. We will follow this process. We will have our presentation of the agenda item by staff. We will ask city clerk to tell us of any written communication received. City council will ask questions of staff at this time, or following that. Then the public hearing will be opened. Any applicant's comments that need to be made during that time, they will have, they will not be limited to three minutes. Any oral testimony from the public will be given three minutes. Applicants rebuttal if necessary. And then we will close public hearing, and then that's when council will come back and give their deliberations. So our item tonight is a proposed ordinance to amend Title 17, which is subdivisions, and Title 18, which is zoning of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code. And this is to establish a new minimum public hearing notification requirement on certain development-related projects. We have Sandra Molina, our Planning and Development Services Director.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. As indicated by the mayor, this is a public hearing to consider an ordinance to expand our minimum public hearing notification requirements. This item is consistent with our city's 2030 vision statement, and it's not identified as a priority project on our 2019, 2020 list that the city council reviewed and approved. However, this was part of the future agenda items list item that the city council directed staff to look at. So with that, on July 23rd, the city council adopted a policy to expand the noticing requirements for development projects, I apologize, that's pretty small, for development projects, community meetings, and then also the policy included just additional outreach efforts that weren't mandates, but that would help us get notification out to different segments, or more segments of our population. So following that, part of that policy was that there's an interim policy relating to the zoning code requirements, or municipal code requirements, and so it was interim until we moved forward with an ordinance. And so that's what we've done. We identified that in our subdivision ordinance and in our zoning code, there are different types of projects that do require public hearing notices to be sent out or published. And so we went to city, excuse me, we went to planning commission on September 19th with the proposed ordinance to expand the notification requirements. And on that day, the planning commission did adopt a resolution recommending that the city council adopt the ordinance. And so our existing public hearing notification, we, for public hearings, we publish in the paper. We also send out, within a 300-foot radius of the subject property, mail notices directly to property owners, and then we post it in three public places. We do all those three things, and then the cost of that is part of the development application processing requirements. The government code allows a city to look at public hearing notification in any other manner it deems appropriate. And so in accordance with the policy, we took forward the ordinance, and this is what it will do. For development projects less than five acres, the direct mailing radius increases from 300 feet to 500 feet, and we would do the standard legal notification requirement in the paper. If the project is between 5 to 9.9 acres, that radius increases to 1,000 feet, and we do a one-eighth page box ad publication. And then for a project that's 10 acres or more, that increases to a radius of 1,500 feet, and with the same type of publication, a one-eighth page box ad. So these are the additional outreach efforts. Again, these aren't mandates, but we would follow this process. But for any reason we failed to meet any of these requirements, it would not impact the public hearing process. So with that, we would recommend that the city council find the code amendment is exempt from CEQA, and that the city council waive further reading and introduce an ordinance to amend Title 17 and Title 18 of the municipal code to establish minimum public hearing notification requirements for certain development projects. With that, available to respond to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Molina. Are there questions of staff at this time? All right. Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. And do we have any written communications?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Is there anybody wishing to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So we'll close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to council for their consideration and perhaps a motion.
I'll move adoption of the item.
I'll second it.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Robles, a second by Councilmember Allen. And Mr. City Attorney, will you read the title, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The title of the ordinance is as follows. An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, finding the ordinance exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and amending Title 17 subdivisions and Title 18 zoning of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code to establish minimum public hearing notification requirements on certain development-related projects. And I will note that the last word should be projects with an S.
All right. Thank you. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
All right. Thank you. Our next item is unfinished business, and this is an ordinance amending Title VI Animals of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code by repealing it in their entirety, Chapter 6.04 and Chapter 6.08, and adopting a new Chapter 6.04 Animal Control and a new Chapter 6.08 Animal Licensing and Vaccinations. This is a second reading, and so I'm going to ask if there are any questions from staff. There will not be a staff report at this time. Any questions? All right. And we generally don't have public comment, but if there's somebody wishing to speak.
There's no public comment.
Okay. So if I could ask for a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Oh.
Can I just ask a question, please?
Okay. Bobby Forbes.
Thank you, Bobby Forbes, Burns Avenue. I brought up at the last meeting about the chips. Is that possible that you can check with SIG and see if that can't come back into this offering with licensing, or is it just too much work?
No, yes, we can look at that, yes.
Thank you. I think it's really important. We had two dogs in town last night that were found. Neither one supposedly was chipped. One said they were chipped, but the animal hospital couldn't find a chip. Both dogs got home, but if the city was able to offer it for 20 bucks, that would just be so much better. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're closing public comment. We'll bring it back to council for their motions.
I'll make a motion for adoption of the ordinance, and have the city attorney read it.
I second the motion.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Hussey. Mr. City Attorney, will you read the title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The title of the ordinance is as follows. An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, amending Title VI of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code by repealing in their entirety Chapter 6.04 and Chapter 6.08, and adopting a new Chapter 6.04 Animal Control and a new Chapter 6.08 Animal Licensing and Vaccinations.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
All right. Thank you. Our next item is our treasurer's report as of June 30th, 2019, Assistant City Manager Fortune.
Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. Staff report before you. As the mayor mentioned, it's the city treasurer's report as of June 30th, 2019. The intent of this report is to provide the city and the agency with their current cash position as of June 30th, to identify where the cash is held, and to show that there are sufficient cash resources to make economic commitments for the next six months. So to provide city council with a summary, current city cash as of June 30th is 10.2 million, and successor agency at this time is 18.4 million. If the agency recalls, in June, they actually approved- If the agency recalls, in June, they actually approved that we defees the bonds, which was eventually approved by the county oversight board. It took us a while to get the paperwork and approval from the Department of Finance. However, we have since now wired the money out. The escrow agent will be receiving that tomorrow. Just an update. So the treasurer's report provides, again, the city's cash balance at a certain point in time. So what we always want to let city council and the public know is, do we have sufficient cash and investments? So total pooled cash, city only, not including the agency, is 10.2 million. Looking at our adopted budget of 12.9 and reducing the successor agency's budget, our total budget is 8.7. What we always look at is, do we have sufficient cash to cover six months? Six months' worth is four point, almost 4.4 million. So with that in mind, the city does have sufficient cash of 10.2 million to cover six months of operating expenditures. That concludes my report. I will be happy to answer any questions city council may have.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager. Are there questions of staff at this time? Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. We'll close that. And this is a receive and file? Do I have a motion for receive and file?
Motion for receive and file.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem, second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
Thank you. Item 11 is our quarterly business license report ending June 30th, 2019. Assistant City Manager Fortune.
Again, good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council. This is our business license report as of June 30th, 2019. The staff report supports two goals. Goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability, and goal number three, promoting economic development through the regular monitoring and reporting of business licenses issued by the city. And this is just to recap. So total new business licenses issued in fiscal year 1819 totaled 160. Forty-six were in the city, and 114 were outside the city. And this just shows you a graph for each quarter, how many business licenses were issued. What we have, what we also attach to the staff report are total number of licenses that were issued as of June 30th in city. So total issued is 343 as of June 30th. As you're aware, 46 of those were new, so roughly almost 300 were renewals. Excellent for business retention. Everyone is staying in the city. And the city manager has something to add?
Just a point of clarification, is when Ms. Fortune references businesses that are outside the city and businesses that are inside of the city. Outside of the city means that when there are businesses that are, that are not physically located in the city, they're actually doing work in the city, and those businesses are required to also have a business license when they conduct business in the city. That's very important that residents need to understand, that if you're hiring someone who has a business in Colton, when they do, they have a physical address in Colton, when they do business in the city of Grand Terrace, they need a business license. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy.
This concludes my report. I will be happy to answer any questions city council may have.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager. Councilmember Hussey.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager. One question, well, a couple of them. If we have businesses outside, say, like they're doing construction in the house, roof repair or something, and code enforcement, do they go by and check it? Do we have anything like a decal placed on the truck or anything saying, you know, I have a business license here, you know, like a lanyard or something, or, because, you know, code drives around all the time, and they see people working, and it'd be easier if the contractor just displayed like a decal saying, hey, in compliance with the city, I have my business license, or this code, get out and check to make sure that the license, he is compliant.
Mr. City Manager?
Currently, what the code enforcement officer has with him is a list of all the businesses, business licenses in the city. So he'll look that up, but you're right, one of the things we could probably look at is, is, is there another way that we can identify that? When the, the, if the, especially on the weekend, with the weekend code enforcement officer, when he's driving through town, if he looks and he sees that there's an operation going on, he'll check and see, does this address have any activity? Because I believe the property owner, Ms., maybe help me, if I'm doing a roof job at my, at my property, is the property owner supposed to get the, ensure that the business license is done, or is that, is that business supposed to have that?
So, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, whenever a building permit is issued through the city, standard practices for the permit technician to verify that the business, the contractor has a business license. And every week, a list of permits that were pulled for the week, and on, and ones that are open, is given to code enforcement, so the weekend code enforcement officer sees a construction activity, they can check that list.
Because another thing that comes to mind, I mean, I have a pool service, I don't even know if they have a business license to come through, you know? That'd be something to look at.
We certainly can, and one of the things that, I will take this opportunity to remind the residents, so when someone pulls a business license, we check to make sure that they have all the proper insurances. You want to make sure that someone coming on your property, who's trimming your trees, mowing your lawns, doing your pool work, repairing your roofs, if they don't have the proper insurances, they're going to sue you. And so one of the things that's very important is that when they pull a business license, we look at those insurances, and that's an important component.
All right. So what do we do if we, because we have numerous complaints from the multi-service finding the business license, so what do we, what's the procedure if somebody didn't have a business license for, say, a couple of years and was working here in the city of Grand Terrace? Is it back fines, or is it a fine, or how do they go about? Right?
There are fines, but, but every business that is, has a physical address in the city, they should be identified, and I know that we recently updated that list, and it's online. So anyone can get on the city's webpage and look under businesses. Sometimes businesses have, they're listed by the fictitious name, and sometimes are listed by, you know, the actual name of the, of the person. And, but they should be able to find the local business in town on, on that particular list. But, but certainly, we can look at any other option that, that's available, that we, to make sure that, that the information is as updated as possible.
Okay. I know we met, we talked about a couple of weeks ago about home-based businesses and the occupational, you know, that had to have a permit, and you can't run customers out of your home. What do you do with somebody like has a CPA or tax services, because they usually run out of their home? Is that a special permit for that?
So part of the home occupation permit process is that we inform the applicant that resident, they cannot have customers come to their home. They can meet off-site or meet at their, their client's home, but they can't have customers come in, they can't advertise, you know, put sign up in front of their home, or even advertise using their home address. So those are all restrictions to, to preserve the residential neighborhood.
And the other step, too, is that if you have a home-based business, one of the things that I think is required, there is notification that's sent out to, in the particular area.
Okay. Last question. How do we do about cross-referencing with multi-service and with the city that people are, have their business license, that something slipped through the cracks over the years, and they're being checked out? I mean, do we have the staff to be able to do that? Is multi-service supposed to do this? I mean?
I mean, muni services?
Pardon?
Muni services?
Ah, muni services, yeah, I'm sorry.
You want, you want to take that one, Ms. Molina, about muni services, or Ms. Fortune?
Yes, sir. That is part of muni services consulting, that's, that is what they provide. So normally, businesses, they have to apply with the county and with the Board of Equalization. They get that report, they look through it, and if they're not on there, they send out those notices, saying you have to go get a license. That is part of the service, they're supposed to be doing that for us. For those that slip through the cracks, like you said, let's say our code enforcement went out and we notified muni services, they go back and check, see how many years they have been in business, and they do go back and collect the back taxes, back, back business license taxes for them.
Also, sir, the Board of Equalization, what happens with muni services, what they'll do is they'll look at who filed with the Board of Equalization, and they'll compare that to a business. So if there's on that list and there's no business license, then they will send out a notice to that business and say, you filed with the Board of Equalization for the last three years, you don't have a business license, therefore you owe the city X number of dollars. And that was, I think, that was one of the initial ways that the city, when they brought in municipal services, muni services, to, to go and, go back and look at, at businesses that previously not had business licenses. So I think they're all caught up with that, but that's one of the ways they, they cross-reference.
All right. Well, thank you for answering my question.
Further questions of staff? All right. Were there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. We'll bring it back to council, and this is a receive and file. Do we have a motion to receive and file?
And Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the quarterly business license report ending June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hussey, second by Mayor Protem Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
All right. Thank you. Item number 12 is an ordinance of the City of Grand Terrace, amending Title XV Buildings and Construction of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code to adopt the 2019 California Code of Regulations, Title 24 State Buildings Code. Sandra Molina, Planning and Development Services Director.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. So this item for the city council is somewhat of a routine matter. Every three years, the state of California looks at the building codes and, and makes revisions to them, and then the jurisdictions of the state are then subject to those codes, and so we adopt them as a matter of routine. Yeah, apologize for the small font, but so, as I said, every three years, this is done, and each jurisdiction would adopt those codes. Each jurisdiction does have the opportunity to make local amendments to the building code, and there's a process for that, but in this particular instance, we are not proposing any changes to the, we're not proposing any local amendments. So this is a comprehensive update of all building codes, and I listed them all on the slide, including the building code, existing buildings code, residential code, electrical, plumbing, green building standards, historical building, mechanical code, and then the reference standards codes. So those are the codes that would be updated with the attached ordinance. What I would, or what staff is recommending, that the city council consider an introduction of the ordinance, amending Title XV Buildings and Construction of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code. But in addition, we are also asking that the city council set a public hearing of November 12th for second reading. The California Government Code does require that for these type of ordinances, that prior to adoption and at second reading, that a public hearing is conducted. And so part of the recommendation is to also set the public hearing. With that out, I'd be happy to respond to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Molina. Any questions of staff at this time? Any requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
Bring it back to council for consideration of a motion. Councilmember Allen.
So what is the, the motion is just for the attorney?
And to set a public hearing.
Well, I'll move, I'll make that motion, but...
A staff recommendation.
I'll make the motion for the staff recommendation, and let the city attorney read the title.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Hussey. Mr. City Attorney, will you read the title of the ordinance?
The very, very long title.
It's very long.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The title of the ordinance is as follows. An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, amending Section 15.08.010 of Chapter 15.08 Building Code, amending Chapter 15.09 Existing Building Code, amending Section 15.10.010 of Chapter 15.10 Residential Code, amending Section 15.12.010 of Chapter 15.12 Electrical Code, amending Section 15.16.010 of Chapter 15.16 Plumbing Code, amending Section 15.17.010 of Chapter 15.17 Green Building Standards, adding Chapter 15.19 Historical Building Code, amending Section 15.20.010 of Chapter 15.20 Mechanical Code, and adding Chapter 15.21 Reference Standards of Title XV Buildings and Construction of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, thereby adopting by reference the 2019 California Building Code series, including the 2019 California Building Code, 2019 California Existing Building Code, 2019 California Residential Code, 2019 California Electrical Code, 2019 California Plumbing Code, 2019 California Green Building Standards Code, 2019 California Historical Building Code, 2019 California Mechanical Code, and 2019 California Reference Standards Code. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please vote.
I almost forgot. Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
All right. Next is item 13, award of contract for signal pole replacement project at Litton Avenue and Lockadina Drive in the amount not to exceed $14,400. Mr. Allen French, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, and good evening, city council members. Here to present this staff report for the signal pole replacement at Litton and Lockadina. The staff report, the staff item supports the 2030 goal number two, maintaining public safety by investing in critical improvements. Earlier this year, the traffic signal pole at Litton and Lockadina was hit by a vehicle and damaged. The contract with Colton for the signal required them to fund the construction of the signal, and the city of Grand Terrace would handle the routine maintenance of the signal after constructed. Although we are maintaining that at this time, this is beyond regular maintenance. The signal pole damage is considered major damage, so the contract requires that us and Colton split the cost of the signal repair 50% each. So, but because we are under the maintenance, we are taking the lead in getting the pole repaired, and we will pay for it upfront and then reimburse, get reimbursed from the city of Colton. The scope of the work for this project involves the footing that was damaged as well, so the contractor has to replace the footing, as well as the pole and any of the pertinent equipment on the pole. At this time, staff is recommending council authorize the city manager to execute the contract with TSR for the signal pole replacement. Just a note that we are working with Colton PD to collect the damages from the, from the pole. Should the council have any questions at this time, I'm happy to answer them, and Gabriel Zapratan from TSR is here to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Director French. Did you say that you're working with Colton PD? Does that mean they have an idea of who may have hit the pole?
Yes, there was a collision report done. The vehicle was abandoned at the site, so the actual perpetrator, they're still, we're working with them on that. The vehicle was found, but the, whoever was driving had left the scene, so there is a criminal report as well.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for staff? All right. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. We'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I move the recommendation, award a construction contract to TSR Construction and Inspection for traffic signal pole replacement project at Litton Avenue and Lockadina Drive in amount not to exceed $14,400, and to authorize city manager to execute the contract subject to city attorney approval as to form.
Second for a small discussion.
All right. So I have a motion by Councilmember Robles, and a second by Mayor Protem Wilson. Mayor Protem?
Just want to remind the council that this was the, of the sharing that we did on the signal pole initially that I vehemently opposed. I didn't feel as if there was any reason for us, considering the fact that it was in the jurisdiction of Colton, for us to have to participate in this, and this just proves my point here, we are now, you know, trying to collect money from a ghost interloper. So, you know, unfortunately, when we put in improvement... So, you know, unfortunately, when we put in improvements, we also inherit the liability of maintenance and so on, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on this item? All right, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
Thank you. Move to item 14, which is change planning commission appointment to direct city council appointment that will run with term of appointing official. Is that you, Mr. Duffy?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On February 12th, 2019, the City Council put the process, which adds Section 8 to the council agendas entitled Future Agenda Items Requested by Council Members. The process provides members of the council an opportunity to recommend a topic be heard for future council meetings. On February 26th, 2019, Councilmember Sylvia Robles requested a future agenda item for the council to request changing the appointment, or discussion of changing the appointment process for planning commissioners. That's currently under, governed by ordinance number 183. And what that ordinance currently reads under 2.16.020, composition terms. The planning commission shall be composed of five members appointed by the city council, three members in staggered terms, three members first and two members next. Section 2.16.03 for removal, all members of the planning commission shall serve at the pleasure of the council and may be removed at any time with or without cause. So under this particular process, this is the stage in terms of the future agenda item where the council did approve to bring the item back for a discussion, and so at this point in time, staff is seeking direction based on the council's discussion for the next steps.
All right, thank you. Are there questions of staff at this time? Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, I'll bring it back to council for discussion and motion. Councilmember Robles.
Well, I guess in a, what we're doing is, it's on the agenda to have a discussion and to give staff some direction, maybe some information they could gather for, to help make our decision. And I don't want to really spend a great deal of time on this, just maybe look at some cities and see what they do, and just take it from there. I realize there's maybe some difficulty implementing it, because we've had difficulty getting planning commissioners. So, but I know when Ken Henderson was on the body, he also had mentioned first about, should we look at this? And there was some discussion about if you have an unruly member of any appointed commission, you know, how do we reel him in? And if you had a direct pointer, maybe they could have a discussion with that person. And also maybe that when you vote for a city council, perhaps that's also a time to look at our commissions, and the appropriate person may be the city council person to refresh those bodies. So with that, I won't get into any deeper discussion.
Further comments? Councilmember Allen.
So my first question was going to be, why would we go, why would we do this? It just seems like, like you described, Councilmember Robles, like you, like you said, it would not be an easy step to implement. I mean, you know, I think, I don't, I, I was a planning commissioner for five years, and I'm not exact, I always thought that that was, that those positions should remain independent and not be seen as, I think it's important, I'll just start right there and say, I think it's important that they remain independent, and I'll let the discussion continue.
Further comments?
I would have to agree with Councilmember Allen that I think that, that these positions should be independent, however, to the question of removal, perhaps it is maybe then we need to be looking at more definition in, in the serving of commissions, specifically planning commission, and in what role would we have to, to have a discussion or a process for removal for a planning commissioner? Sounds like maybe that's part of the issue that's, that's being looked at here. Councilmember Robles?
In two, I, you know, I was just a little bit concerned that we had two folks, young men with advanced degrees in, in environmental studies and in planning, and they weren't appointed. And it was just, it was just my thought that if we each had an opportunity to appoint someone, then perhaps there might be some balance that we bring to the planning commission that we're unable to do, you know, with a four to one vote. So I would still like to look at what other cities do before we, we put this to bed completely. I mean, there, there has to be something to benefit from looking at perhaps the City of Loma Linda, San Bernardino, Redlands, and see what, what they do.
All right, so it's the desire of, of Councilmember Robles that staff is directed to look at what other cities are doing? Is there a further support for that? Mayor Protem?
I'd like to weigh in on this, I guess, after having been on the planning commission for 21 years. It concerns me that there might be some situations where a person would be put on the planning commission based on a regular kind of a four-year routing, or two-year routing, or whatever, that they really don't make a lot of sense that they're on there, especially if they don't have any prior knowledge whatsoever about those kinds of things. Over time, I think I saw an awful lot of people go and, you know, come and go on the planning commission, and regardless of what we'd like to think is appropriate, it's pretty impossible for you to be on a planning commission and not know a little bit about what you're doing. And unfortunately, the learning curve is so steep that over time, you don't get real good efficiency. And I'm glad that the folks are, you know, generating some action in relation to serving on a planning commission, or any of the, any of the different commissions that we have. But I do think that there are different positions within government and volunteer government that take a little bit of expertise, and I think probably if I was to ask the director of planning, she'd probably agree with me. It's, it's much more difficult on the person than it is on anything else, and fortunately, we have built out a great deal of the city, but we've got some pretty hefty heavies coming through these, these halls in the next few years, and it would be bad if we had, you know, people in, on the planning commission that were just kind of stuck there because it seemed like a good, good idea. So I, I think, I think I would not be in favor of a, of a change to the, this other procedure. I know other communities do this, they have a situation where a planning commissioner gets appointed by a particular district, but we don't have districts. So there's really no point to it, in my mind.
Councilmember Robles?
Well, I think we kind of know that where three of you sit, so I don't think it's, we should waste any more time on, on this item. You know, you say the planning commission's independent, well, you know, the council's appointed, excuse me, is elected every four years. Every four years, we have to go before the voters, and I didn't see why the planning commission should be insulated from any kind of review like that. So I do find some, agree with the mayor on that perhaps we need to look at, it's also a difficult step to have five members of a city council remove one planning commissioner, and we should probably have a process if we're going to look at that.
Okay. I would like to see us have a process, because it's, it's not clear on this. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Under our current code, Section 2.16030, the code provides all members of the planning commission shall serve at the pleasure of the city council and may be removed at any time with or without cause. This is a standard procedure for most cities whereby there is no notice required, there's no reason required. The motion, we would put it on the agenda, the council could discuss and vote, because again, commissioners, not only planning commissioners, but all commissioners are at will.
How do we, how do we have that as an item on our agenda?
It could be added in a future agenda item, going through that process.
It is a mess.
But if, but if we did want to, you know, put in a more formal process, we can always do that.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, and maybe one of the other options you met, the council may want to consider, is that while you want to, I've heard you want to respect the body being independent, but the, but if the city council establishes a 2030 vision, and the council has criteria they're trying to achieve, you may want to have, you may want to have some criteria that you want to ensure that your planning commission isn't, you know, is, is in sync with that 2030 vision. For example, in other communities that I've worked for, they require an oath of office, and they require a pledge to the Constitution, California, United States, and all the, the ordinance of the, of the city. Ordinance of the city and also maybe the strategic plan, or something like that. So if you, if you wanted to create some criteria in terms of how you judge, or how you appoint your members, or, or letting them know what they're getting into based on the 2030 vision, that might be an opportunity to look at from that point. Because while it is true they are independent, what you'll see happen if they're, if they're inconsistent with what your plans are, you will get an appeal, after an appeal to the, to the, to the city council from their decisions. And then that's a pretty good indication that the bodies aren't, aren't, they have the same philosophy.
Councilmember Robles?
Well, I was, I was a governor's appointee, for example, and when there was a governor's election, everybody submitted their resignation, and you had to reapply. It would seem to me, you know, planning commission is an appointed position, it's not an elected position. So it would seem to me at the minimum you should, would have, when there's an election, those positions, you know, in sync with the term should resign, and because, so you can have that, because then what are we going to do? Delegate to a city manager or, or department head to recommend that we remove somebody? Or that, you know, so, so the, the only option for removal we would have is, we would put an agenda item and say, you know, ask for everybody's resignation and ask them to reapply. Now, we don't, we don't have elections by districts, and I think we're too small to have elections by districts, but one of the reasons that there's been successful litigation is because there are city councils that are not reflective of their populations. Now, the planning commission is supposed to be a training ground for future city council people. So if I'm voted out four to one, because I felt the two gentlemen, one of them should have gotten a chance with their advanced degrees that were higher than anybody else that applied, to be, sit on a planning commission and potentially move up and, and compete for city council, then we're, we're blunting the process for somebody to, to come up that could possibly replace, place me. So those are my, my, my final two comments on this. Either way you look at it, it's a messy process, and one clean way of doing it is stagger, ask for people's resignations, and if they're that great, they're reappointed.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
So when I was on the planning commission, I had to reapply when my term ended, and I had to compete against anyone else that applied.
I was one of the people's pointy, don't forget that.
No, no, I'm not, I know, okay? But also, after my, after my term ended, I wasn't, that's automatically renewal, I had to reapply and compete with anyone else in the community, and each planning commissioner has to do that, so that, that does happen each term. And, and the council could absolutely have said, well, you served one term, and that was great, but we're going to choose someone else. So the other thought, I'd like to mention my thoughts on this, you keep bringing up the professionalism and the degrees of the applicants. I'd like to say that in my opinion, that we have highly skilled, highly trained, highly degreed staff that we pay a high amount of money to. We don't need to have staff appointed to, new staff up here, working with staff down there. We need members of the community come up here and serve as, go between, between the rest of the community and the staff. We know how the staff, we trust the staff, I trust the staff. I don't need to be the equivalent of a city manager to sit up here with a city manager, and I don't think we need the equivalent of someone with an advanced degree in city planning to be on the planning commission, because we have those people sitting out here. What we need up here are community members that don't second guess every, and try to be the, the manager of the staff down there. We've had that before up here, and I don't think we need that anymore. I agree that with the city manager, that having some better criteria questions, interview questions, because I remember the interview questions that I answered from the podium, and I thought, after I had served about two years on the planning commission, I thought, those questions really weren't, they could have been a lot more relevant, and you could have had the interview process to be more relevant also, and it doesn't have to be so cut and dried, so you can get a feel for the person that would fit the role the best. So you could reevaluate your interview process, I think. Again, so I do not believe we need to make a change. I don't think that our planning commissioners need to be degreed city planners, and I believe that we could reevaluate the criteria we use when evaluating candidates for appointment. Thank you.
No, I just want to...
Councilmember Robles?
I just want to say, I don't think we need to have degreed people on the planning commission, but I do believe that it doesn't hurt to recognize some special skills and talents that people bring that would be helpful to the planning commission, and by no means would I ever pick someone just solely because they have, you know, a degree. Now, there was a time, for example, in school districts, that when you had local finance, that you would have highly degreed schools administrators sit on one Board of Education and, and vice versa, you know, to have a highly skilled set and, and competition for, for, for school districts. And there's, I think, some, there was some benefit with that, but that shouldn't mean, and I don't mean to say that, you know, someone who doesn't have advanced degrees could not also contribute in a likewise manner. But I just felt that, you know, we also have to realize that these, we were a very small city, planning commission's really the principal place that we're going to have a training ground for people to move up to the city council. And there, you know, when we did the, the interviews, it's kind of an awkward thing. You either have applicants, or you have one applicant. This is what, you know, we've had, and I don't see any problem with someone serving 21 years. Again, it's a small, it's a small city, and so that was not my, my, but if we're going to have some kind of removal process, it just seems, the easiest way to do it is when you have two, two city council people up in the staggered term, just have people resign and reapply, and more than likely, they're going to be reappointed. It's just to not have a messy Chicago-style knock-down, drag-out process, kind of have just a clean way of doing things.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
One of the most important criteria that I look for in a candidate that I looked for the last time we had selection process is, how often do I see them out here? How often do I see them participating in other community events and supporting the community? And that influence... And that influences me when I, you know, see the candidates and hear the candidates and interview the candidates and, and that I know that they're involved in the community, they have a love for the community, and they want to see the community progress and grow. And, and they make that known ahead of time, many times. And there are some people you'll see out here in this audience often, and they just come here just so they can be a part of the, learn about it and be a part of that process. And, and that's what I look for also. I think that's a very important factor.
Just, again, you know.
Councilmember Robles.
When I ran for office, someone in this community didn't know that in my 41 years of living here, I had served on the planning, on the park commission. They, you know, we're in a digital age. I, I watched the city council meetings from, from my home. So, again, what the criteria in our constitutions is be an elector. You know, so, when you're going to start getting group think and, you know, so a person works, has a bunch of, maybe going to school at night or whatever, and they have a lot to offer a city, but because you didn't see them at Little League or sitting out here, you know, so you're, it's, it's a bias, you know? It's, it is. So, I think, you know, if someone, anybody to me can come here and, 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 and apply. And as long as they live in the city and they're a voter. And I don't think we should start adding things to it.
All right. So, where does that leave us with? Do we need to have staff look at anything to do with the ordinance or changes at this I'm seeing not at this time? All right. Mr. City Attorney, did you have something you wanted to add?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, we'll move past that item and we will go to requests for future agenda items. And this is an opportunity for city council members to request an item be put on the agenda. So, tonight, we will be looking at one agenda item, and this is, this is an opportunity for, to discuss whether this comes back to us for a full discussion and pursuant to requirements of the Brown Act. No other items may be considered other than the one listed to note below tonight. We have a request that an ordinance prohibiting the sale of e-cigarettes and flavored tobacco products be brought back for consideration, and that was requested by Councilmember Bill Hesse. So, Councilmember Hesse.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure we all heard in the news and everything about the vaping problems that's going on in our country and the youth that are getting lung damage and stuff. So, I, one thing, I don't even know if we could enforce this. This is something I just thought we could bring up for discussion and where we take it from there, how the ball rolls. But just some facts here that e-cigarettes usage by high school increased, students increased by 78% between 2017 and 2018. One in four high school students have used tobacco products. Four of all five kids have used tobacco, start with flavored products. Kids 15 to 17 years old are 16 times more likely to use, start vaping. And kids as young as 12 years old in elementary school have been reporting vaping. It's a growing concern. I don't, I know we have a, a smoke shop here, but like I said, I don't, you know, I'm just, something that came to light. Then I was thinking, I was reading on that some of the problems with the e-cigarettes and the vaping has been a black marketing products. Vaping products get laced with high potency THC or other chemicals that the kids are buying because I guess, I don't know even know the price, but they, I heard that the vaping products were flavored is pretty expensive. So, I'm sure, of course, a kid's going to buy from his buddy or something and save money, you know? But it's just something that came to mind, and I, I don't know what the council thinks about this. I've been hearing governors in states have been outlawing it. New York, I think, was outlawing, and I know it's going to be brought up to, I heard, you know, they're, they're working on it. And I heard that the council in Los Angeles was even looking into it. So, it's just something that, I don't know if you guys want to look at, you know, what we could do as a city. I know we're limiting our resources. I don't expect CO to go breaking down doors and telling a kid that, you know, hey, you're not allowed to vape, you know? That's unfortunately a small city. I don't expect them to go around to the, the stores and say, you know, you're not allowed to have that product. So, just something that came to mind and just like to, know the council would like to discuss it or, or future discussions or even, you know, entertain the fact about it, the idea. Thank you.
All right. So, your motion is to bring back a, a discussion of an ordinance prohibiting the sale of e-cigarettes and flavored tobacco products? Is there a second?
A second.
All right. No, it's, it's whether it's coming back to us for discussion. All right. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Allen, Hesse, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, Mayor Magnamo votes no.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, your communications.
So, Saturday, October the 5th, was the city's community cleanup day where we had bulky item collection and also we had shredding, a shredd event. So, during the course of the day, we had approximately 202 vehicles show up for the collection of bulky items, couches, and people were cleaning up their properties. See, it's a nice, long line there. In addition to that, we had the shredding, shredding event. We had about 116 people show up for that particular section of the program. I think we did about two tons of material in terms of shredded paper for recycle, for And next though, actually tomorrow is the American Red Cross Blood Drive here at City Hall in our community room from 1:30 PM to 7, to 7:30 PM. There is still time to sign up and show up for that event. It's been very successful, the last two that we had here, here in the city. Also, you can still have an opportunity to sign up for our CERT program to be trained to be one of our emergency response team members. There are three different sections of training on Saturday, October the 12th, 19th, and the And let's not forget that on Thursday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, we will all gather at Richard Rollins Park for trunk retreat. There will be costumes and candy and lots of fun and music. And so, we invite the community to come out. We had a really good time last year, had a great turnout. And we want to see everyone there on October 31st from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. Thank you. Oh, I have one more, I'm sorry. We have the Country Fair that's coming on Saturday, November the 2nd, from 9:00 to 3:00 PM at City Hall. You'll start to see these banners pop up throughout, and you can get on the city's webpage too, and there'll be lots of activity over the next couple of weeks, getting people to sign up to bring their crafts and also their, their home baked goods for the different competitions that we have at the Country Fair. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. So, we do have a closed session tonight. We will be recessing to closed session. Conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.8, property 22582, City Center Court, APN 0277-161-30. City Negotiator, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager. Negotiating party, San Bernardino County Fire. And under negotiation is price and terms of payment. For those of you that are here tonight, thank you so much for joining us. We will be adjourning after our closed session to our next regular city council meeting to be held Tuesday, October 22nd, 2019 at 6:00 PM. So, any request to have an item placed on a future, future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. At this time, we are in recess to closed session. All right. We'll reconvene to open session. The council met and closed session. Conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.8, property 22582, City Center Court, APN 0277-616, excuse me, 0277-61, -161-30. City Negotiator, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager. Negotiating parties, San Bernardino County Fire. Under negotiation was the price and terms of payment. We have no reportable actions, but we did give direction to staff. So, we will adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held Tuesday, August 22nd, 2019 at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. We are adjourned.